June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, would you please call the roll? Jared.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Here.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Minton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As I said, this is a work session this evening. Um, we um, have to decide whether or not we'll take public comment.
I move we allow public comment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. The first item on our agenda is to discuss water and wastewater rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a quick introduction before we launch into our discussion of uh, water and wastewater utility rates, along with stormwater rates. This is our first budget workshop um, that we are having for the twenty twenty six development. Can assure you, we kind of have this new process in place that we've been working on this year, but can assure you that uh, we have all been working very diligently to put together a balanced budget um, for you all to um, have an opportunity to review and to be able to adopt later in September. Um, so this uh, tonight, you will hear from our three utilities. So utilities are a little bit different than our other services that we provide and that they are actually not paid for with property taxes or sales taxes. Um, they are actually paid for with user fees. So these are services that we are able to charge um, the cost back to the users. We are very excited to be able to share um, these three utilities with you and then a little bit after we get through those, uh, we will talk about our revenue projections. So one of the first things that we do when we start putting together a budget is really sitting down and looking at what are the uh, forecasted revenues that we are anticipating bringing in. So we are very um, been working hard to put together some good, solid numbers for us to start our budgeting process with, with those revenue projections. So um, we will again uh, hear from uh, the city manager. I will be presenting a recommended budget for you all on July eighth. So tonight is just about those utility uh, budgets that we've put together and then of course, revenue projections. But we are very much looking forward to this budget process and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have as we start the twenty twenty six development. So, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, Kevin Niles, Director of Public Utilities. Tonight I'm joined by Randy DeWitt, our Assistant Director, and together we will walk through the twenty twenty five, twenty six uh, utility update. We'll be covering the financial health and forecast for both the water and wastewater enterprise funds. Our goal is to provide transparency, discuss necessary rate changes, and explain the long-term plans for these essential services. Uh, annual utility rates adjustments may not be popular, but they are necessary. These ensure and maintain adequate reserve recommendations for financial stability. They increase help fund day-to-day operations, critical maintenance, and our capital improvement programs. They also ensure we meet our debt obligations on past and future projects. And most importantly, they allow us to meet all federal and state regulatory standards and support our community. We started twenty twenty five with a strong water fund balance, twelve point six million, which was higher than the ten million dollars originally budgeted. This surplus was due to several factors. A three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in sales revenue was offset by a six hundred dollar, or six hundred thousand dollar in capital outlay savings at the treatment plant. Deferred projects in the water distribution saved us three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Capital project debt savings came in at two hundred thousand. Investment income that wasn't budgeted contributed to another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All these reflect, reflect careful financial management and some favorable, favorable market conditions. From January to May twenty five, water consumption was up one point six higher than the same period in this year, twenty twenty four, and five point five percent above the five-year average. Revenues during the same period was five point one percent higher than twenty twenty four. Despite this, we still may project a year-end shortfall between half a million dollars to one point five million dollars, depending on consumption in the second half of this year. This highlights the importance of maintaining stable rates to account for weather-related and seasonal variability. All our divisions are at or under budget for year-to-date. There are no significant expenditure increases expected for twenty twenty six compared to twenty twenty five. We're requesting, oh, I'm sorry, I'm off. This is a graphical representation of possible water revenue throughout the year based on the ten-year data, plus possible consumption from June through December. Depending on the type of environmental conditions, we have a significant revenue shortfall or possible excess revenue. It's all weather-related. So there are no significant expenditure increases expected in twenty twenty six for the twenty twenty five year. We're requesting a new shared position, which is a management assistant. This will be split fifty-fifty between water and wastewater. The general fund transfer will be at two point zero five million dollars, which is about eleven percent of our total water expenditures. Therefore, based on the financial forecast and our capital needs, a three percent rate increase is recommended.
Kevin, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what kind of weather and how does that affect, so like if we get more rain, do we have to expend, do we have to spend more, or if it's?
If we get more rain, you're gonna have less water usage.
Oh, right, okay.
You're gonna have less irrigation.
Okay.
So if it's a dry, hot year, you're gonna have more irrigation, more water usage.
Okay.
Some of our expenditures would increase a little bit, like as far as chemical costs, uh, but you're still gonna have a higher revenue generation.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin, could you tell us a little bit about that management assistant position?
So, we are extremely short-staffed in the utilities department. Uh, we have a lot of projects that we'd like to roll out and get out uh, under the market. We just don't have the staff to do it. So we're looking at somebody that can basically help both Randy and I kind of do kind of project management, um, help us get some of these projects out the door, keep an eye on them, all like the easement acquisitions, all the things that go into getting one of these projects done.
Is this like an, an add because we've chosen not to, to fill, or we've, we've kept our staff short?
Correct.
Okay.
Alright. Um, so looking ahead, the fund balance is expected to decrease gradually, starting with twelve million dollars in twenty twenty six. Projections show a balance of ten million dollars by twenty thirty and nine point one million dollars by twenty thirty-five. This shortfall emphasizes why ongoing modest rate increases are necessary to maintain a healthy utility fund. This chart shows the projected fund balance over time with a three percent rate increase. The trend clearly illustrates that without careful planning and modest adjustments, our reserve levels will dip below recommended levels. This puts future reliability and emergency responsiveness at risk. It's also important that we are able to maintain a fund balance that will cover three months of operational costs and one year of our debt services.
Is this a three percent annual or just a one-time three percent?
This is a three percent every year.
Okay.
This chart compares actual and projected revenues and expenses over time. The blue bar represents revenue and the red bar represents expenses. We're starting to see a divergence where expenses are projected to rise faster than revenues without additional rate adjustments. This is due to inflation, infrastructure aging, and rising operating costs. We recommend the three percent increase to close the gap and maintain financial balance. The sooner we act, the easier we'll, the sooner we will be able to avoid steep increases in the future. Even with the proposed three percent increase, Manhattan's average monthly residential water bill remained competitive when compared to peer cities across Kansas. This supports our strategy of making gradual adjustments rather than dramatic ones. Uh, we have very ma, we have several large-scale projects in our six-year capital improvement plan. These include filter rehabilitation at the water treatment plant, the crosstown transmission main, Anderson Avenue replacement, which is currently under construction, well-filled expansion and upgrades, and we have numerous water main replacements that need to take place over the next several years. These are necessary investments to maintain system reliability and support community growth.
And Kevin, all of those were included in, on the previous slide with our debt expenses as if we were doing it all six?
Yes. So as far as water projects for the administrative side of things, uh, administrative efforts are just as important as physical infrastructure. We're working on a condition assessment and replacement plan for all our water mains, a business continuity and cost allocation plan, an electrical coordination study for the water treatment plant, and all of these will help us plan more efficiently, efficiently and manage risk. Is there any questions before I go into the wastewater?
When did we last raise our water rates?
Last year.
Last year?
Correct.
And we did help, what percent?
Four percent.
Four percent.
Okay. Uh, as far as our wastewater uh, enterprise is concerned, wastewater also began twenty twenty five with a strong balance, twelve point five million above the ten point one million budgeted. We saw a revenue surplus of four hundred and forty thousand and savings across personnel, capital, and maintenance projects. Our farm income and unbudgeted investment incomes also exceeded our expectations. Revenue is four point three higher year-to-date compared to twenty twenty four. Winter quarter averages remain steady, uh, which is supporting our projections. All expenditures are currently under budget, showing strong cost control. There are no major increases over twenty twenty five planned. The only staff changes again is the shared management assistant role. The general fund transfer remains steady at two point zero five million dollars. A three percent rate increase is both forecasted and recommended to maintain stability and support upcoming projects. As far as the fund balance projections, our projections show a decline from twelve point five million in twenty twenty five to just to seven point five million in twenty thirty-five. Our recommended fund balance in twenty thirty-five should be twelve million dollars. This signals the need for consistent rate planning and to avoid dipping into low or threatening future service reliability. This visual reinforces the importance of steady rate increases. Delaying adjustments leads to more, or even severe shortfalls in later years.
Kevin, could you, could you explain that pretty severe dip that start?
Well, actually, we have um, in our projected out years, uh, we actually had the rate increase in twenty thirty to go down to one percent. So there's a significant drop based off of that. We're not calculating a three percent in, increase. And actually, we were, Randy and I were able to sit and go through it, and we've made some adjustments to this. So currently, this is not the most current version of this graph. Uh, we have been able to make some adjustments, so it's not so dramatic. Uh, but we are anticipating again that general fund transfer with a four percent escalator every year.
So um, will you be coming to us asking for, you, you indicated that this is projecting, projecting three percent each year?
Till twenty thirty.
Up to the point where it goes down. Will you be asking for us to um, approve a three percent increase per annum for a five-year period? When we are discussing the budget, or is this something that's going to come back to us each year?
I think it's just gonna come back to you each year. I think it's something that we need to evaluate on a year-by-year basis. Again, the, the rates that we're doing right now may not dramatically impact next year, but it is, as you can see, impacting that future years out. So there, again, it really depends on where we're at and with relationship to the general fund and those things, but I do think it's something that we will be coming year after year um, to ask for uh, rate increases. And they could be at some point in time, like I said, nominal at one percent. But we do need to make sure that we have kind of a continuous rate increase, so we're not coming to you in twenty thirty-one or twenty thirty-two asking for ten to fifteen percent rate increase.
Yeah, I think just the confusion on it, Kevin, is that it looks right now that you will need to do that in order to get us to the projected, or the recommended fund balance.
And that's, we, we had some debt coming off and some debt coming on. And again, like I said, we've been able to make some adjustments to this, so it's not as dramatic as it looks on the screen today. Um, but again, that was just recently updated within the last, you know, two days.
Thank you.
Uh, this, this slide mirrors what we saw on the water side. The revenues in blue and the expense in red begin to separate around twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Expense growth is driven by capital needs, aging asset, and rising costs due to environmental regulations. Without intervention, this gap will continue to grow and stressing our fund reserves. Again, we recommend the three percent increase now and plan for future ones to avoid disruptive high, rate hikes later.
Is that bump the uh, the solid waste facility that we talked about a couple weeks ago?
That's correct, yes. As far as the municipal rate comparison, again, uh, even after the proposed three percent rate increase, Manhattan sewer rates remain in line with those in the similar-sized cities. Our wastewater utility, utility remains competitively priced. Uh, as far as our major capital improvements include, uh, again, we just talked about the solid treatment upgrade, our C-MAR project, two point five million for trunk main replacements, uh, two million for capacity improvements. We also need SCADA and HVAC improvements in our systems. And these investments are essential to keep systems functioning and compliant. And then as far as the administrator planning as well, again, we talked about the business continuity planning, the cost allocation, and they will do an electrical study of the wastewater plant as well. Other charges and fees, we were recommending a three percent increase in system development and high-strength waste users. Uh, that would be like KSU, BRI, and VatMet, basically the, the animal sciences community. Our Kansas One Call fees and meter installation charges remain unchanged. This allows for growth-related costs to be shared more equitably.
So you're asking for the same increase for high-strength wastes as everyone else?
Correct.
Okay.
So as far as environmental issues, uh, new federal and state regulations are increasing in their responsibilities. We've concluded the waste service line inventory for the lead and copper rule. EPA will be monitoring the PFOS and PFOS at major wastewater systems. So far, Manhattan has non-detect PFOS in our water. These rules come with compliance and cost implications. State and federal assessments are driving more system-level planning. Uh, we're due to update the emergency, uh, emergency response plan by twenty twenty-six. Risk assessments and vulnerability reviews are also underway. SRF loan availability is declining, meaning that we have to rely more on rate funding for future projects. State revolving from? This slide shows that Manhattan remains in the mid-range for total combined utility bills. We offer high-quality services at a competitive rate. With the proposed three percent rate increase, the average monthly water bill will see a small rise. Most customers will notice only a minor change. Uh, on average, uh, we will charge three dollars and thirty-nine cents for one unit of water, which is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. You can consider the average person uses between eight, eighty to a hundred gallons a day. This is also the customer impact on their wastewater bill. The same applies to sewer rates, small increase, large impact on long-term sustainability. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No real questions, uh, like the presentation, can understand it, and comfortable with the three percent increase.
I mean, I think, Kevin, you, you mentioned it briefly, but to talk, can you talk a little bit more about the importance of that fund balance and where that recommendation comes from on, on how, how much is in there?
Sure. Again, we'd like to keep that fund balance secure. We have to be able to meet at least three months of operating expenditures as well as providing one year of debt services. And then on top of that, if we have any kind of catastrophic event here and within the community, I promise you that fund balance is gone. And it only takes one major event. Something is take out our, our, you know, God forbid, our water plant, or our wastewater plant, or some of our towers and infrastructure, that, that's gonna be a dramatic hit to our, our fund balance. So it's nice to have.
I would say it's more than nice to have.
It's great to have. How's that?
Drink, safe drinking water is a must-have. Um, yeah.
The only thing I would add to that, to Commissioners, is um, you know, if we do have some tragic event, like a tornado or something that would happen, our users' ability to be able to pay for water services or wastewater services would be depleted or, but we would also still be providing that service. So having that fund balance allows us to continue operations uh, while we're, while we're having a crisis.
So you're transferring about eleven percent from each fund to the general fund?
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Andrew Von Luntel, two twenty-five, Four Winds Court. Uh, in the presentation, um, I guess one of the things I think we need to talk about a lot is our population expectations. How the, you know, what is, what is this city utilities' expectations of population growth? And how many people are gonna be using, you know, are we gonna grow ten thousand in the next twenty-five years? Are we gonna grow fifteen thousand? So I mean, I think that's an important thing to talk about, um, and how those affect positively or negatively the um, rates, I mean, how, how profitable the utilities are gonna be, so. Um, I'd also like to see, like, I guess I'm, I'm also curious about how much would be outside of city and how much would be inside city. So if, are we supplying a lot of people outside of the city um, with, with water? So, thank you.
Yeah, we do charge more for outside-city services. So um, you know, as far as percentages, I don't know the exact percentages, but we do uh, do, do supply outside-city services. Um, it's all water, some wastewater, uh, that we have for outside-city services. Uh, and again, we basically charge twice as much for, for that service. We're basically a wholesale water to, to, to those.
So, in the budget sheets, on the revenue side, uh, Commissioners, we do itemize uh, in the cell, service and sales section.
Jared, can you, we interrupted Alex's um, time. Can you reset the clock for two minutes to start after we've heard trimmer end, and Kevin?
So just, just to give you an example, obviously, we have wholesale districts like Blue Township, rural water districts, like you mentioned, they are our primary outside-city customers, and like Kevin said, they pay a surcharge. Those wholesale customers pay about twelve and a half percent surcharge, whereas just a individual customer outside the city generally pays either fifty or a hundred percent surcharge. But just, just for an example, on the wastewater fund side, total revenues for uh, twenty twenty-five budget was thirteen point seven million dollars. For inside-city, uh, Blue Township is about six hundred and forty thousand dollars, so quite a bit less, but they're, they are the primary outside-city customer. Just in general, though, those, those outside-city customers make a very small portion of our, of our overall revenues. Um, and a similar example on the water side, you know, in twenty-five budget, we expected about thirteen point six million in inside-city revenues. Outside-city sales, uh, just, you know, the one-off customers, those are about two hundred and thirty-four thousand in revenue, so a very small percentage uh, inside versus outside.
Could you also address the um, growth aspect that we do have um, in our plans?
And as far as the growth uh, aspect is concerned, right now, most of our capital improvement plans are to upgrade and enhance and, and better our current infrastructure. We don't have a lot of projects that are going to be outside of the city itself. Uh, so we do anticipate some minor growth, an average five percent is what we would anticipate. Hopefully, we see more, uh, but we do have plans in, in our overall portfolio to offset anything that may come up, especially out in the eastern corridor.
Kevin, can you address the millions of gallons per day capacity versus usage?
I'm sorry?
In each plant, we have a per-day, million gallons per day capacity.
Yeah.
And then what we're actually using or dispersing.
So they, they said at the wastewater plant, we're about eleven, eleven and a half million gallons a day capacity. Right now, we're about, we service five, so we're about half. It would be the same at the water plant. Uh, we have thirty, we can do up to thirty MZD at the plant, and right now at our peak flow, we're at nine, almost ten.
Okay, so we have growing room.
Correct.
Thank you. Did those answer your questions?
Yeah, I think it does.
Come back to the mic, please.
Yeah, I think it does answer my questions. Uh, yeah, just, I mean, it's, just trying to figure out um, how the city's gonna grow over the next twenty years, and just, I mean, we're not growing at a very high rate right now, you know, for this past decade, but um, it looks like we got a lot of room to grow, so, thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah?
Amber Starling, five, four zero eight Houston Street. I asked on Monday morning, I asked the city manager's office about volume discounts. As I am aware, commercial high-volume pays less per gallon than other users. Uh, I'm sure that uh, Mr. Miles can speak to that.
Yeah, everybody pays the same rate.
Everybody does pay the same rate?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to storm, oops, yeah, stormwater rates. If I could read it to help.
Hey.
Hi there.
Good evening.
I think we did. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Brian Johnson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. I have the stormwater piece tonight, uh, batting cleanup here. Got a quick agenda. We're gonna talk about financials, look at the community survey again, anticipate our fee structure through twenty twenty-nine. I do wanna look at the downtown east and west CIP projects a little bit, uh, also look at our comparable cities. Uh, in the past, we have also given uh, update on the Fee and Loue program. We've used this opportunity to update the commission once a year on that. And then I do also want to talk a little bit about PCBMPs, uh, the Fee and Loue of Treatment that Bill's been working on. Uh, we're gonna have some agenda items coming up on that in the fall. We're going to have some agenda items coming up on that in the fall. So first, financials, and I think I confused some of you with this, and I apologize, so let me walk through it real quickly. Our equivalent cost goal has been achieved. Again, you pay based on the impervious square foot on your lot. So if you're Walmart, you pay more, but you pay more per square foot. Your total bill is based on the area of runoff for commercial properties. So Walmart pays more than Sonic, who pays more than hardware store. Residential, they all pay the same rate, so they pay that equivalent unit. The fund expenses and revenue, so revenue is expected to be about 5.3 million this year, and we're on track for that. The balance at the end of this year is anticipated to be about $4.6 million. We actually have more expenses this year than we do revenue, so our year-to-date or anticipated revenue in '26 will be a little bit lower. Of that, expenses, capital debt or capital projects, about 87% of that, so about 87 cents on every dollar that we take in this program, goes directly into projects to help reduce flooding, detention, storm pipe, inlets, all sorts of those things. Operating expenses, so this is our equipment, materials, fleet, IT. This is everything that keeps our crews running, our stormwater crew. This helps outfit them so they can get their jobs done. It's about 35% of the total revenue, about 1.9. And then our personnel expenses, that's the cost of those 17 FTEs, about 24% a year. Again, add those up, it's more than 100% because we're going in debt this year. We're actually spending a little bit more than we're taking in. That's mainly due to a couple of big CIP projects that we're still paying off. The downtown Project 15, and then to come to Corvair, we built some big detention ponds up there. Those pay off in the next couple of years, and they're over a million dollars for those payments. So next couple of years, and you'll see it in the slides where our debt takes a sharp turn, and then it'll start coming back up again. We'll show you that slide in a minute. Again, community survey from 2023, obviously, stormwater. About 50% of the people, you know, approve or think it's okay, think it's doing okay. This probably will be about 35% by tonight at 10 o'clock. Feel free to answer my voicemails for me. But yeah, this in 2023 is about 50%. Again, priorities, obviously, you know, some thorough fairs and streets, and then obviously, quality of stormwater infrastructure and drainage, about a third. So this is our anticipated fee structure out to 2029, and all of our projections are based on this fee structure. So I I heard the questions before about future rates. This is what we base all of our projections on out to 2040. Again, about 50 cents a year is what we're anticipating as we go into the out years. This year, it's 50 plus a 25 cent surcharge for the levy, because we don't have those costs known yet. Those costs are still a bit unknown. I'll show you later on in the graph, though, we have saved quite a bit of money for a down payment on that. So we're pretty happy that that's going the way it is, especially considering the interest rates that we're looking at today for bonds. Downtown east and west watershed study, so this is the, this is really the driver of a lot of those CIP projects. Again, the levy runs through here, and everything shown on this slide, at one point or another, has to go through the levy, so that's why the levy is so critical. If water, drop water falls in either one of these watersheds, it has to make its way through the levy. So that's why the levy was such an important part of the stormwater infrastructure for the city. Not only does it protect us, it also allows our water to get out, so it's doing two things at once. Again, levy shown here, CIP number one was downtown Point Avenue, stormwater system we did about five, six years ago. It's been pretty successful. I'll call DMI in the morning and see how they did tonight. Got a lot of rain in a really short period of time here at City Hall, so we will follow up on that. It's been performing pretty well, though. We've been pretty pleased with it. CIP two was a betterment, larger outfall through the levy. It was a 96-inch corrugated metal pipe installed in the early 60s. We went to a triple or a double 12-by-10 box or some giant structure to help carry water away from the pretty ditch. The overall plan of the downtown east and west watershed, the overall goal is to get water off the pretty ditch. The pretty ditch can only hold about a two-inch rain, that's it, and then we're full. The goal is to get water away from the pretty ditch, run it up to the north or run it down to the south. And you can see what we've done with the first three projects already, running it away from the pretty ditch, because that just doesn't hold a lot of water.
For the layperson, that's the ditch that runs along.
Walmart, TCB, yeah.
Why is it called the pretty, just just because?
You know, I've heard a lot of names, that's the one I can remember. Million-dollar ditch, multimillion-dollar ditch, lots of names, but that is very undersized. When it was built in the 50s, it probably worked well, but it's just undersized for today.
But it looks nice.
It does look nice, yes. We could call it the landscape ditch for something, yeah. Maybe we ought to have naming rights for that, huh? There you go, now we're thinking. So CIP three is the TCB ditch, which you saw the change order a couple of weeks ago for lots of lime. We're moving some lime around. Randy has been very kind in helping us with removing some lime pits in here. So that project is about done, and that project is going to pick up everything north of Blument. So everything that runs from Blument north, so think Dairy Queen, the coffee shop that's down there now, Sonic, which we have some pictures of Sonic flooding, all that water's going to go north instead of south, because it can't go south. It's backed up through the pretty ditch. So all that water's going to be carried north and then go through the levy at CIP two. CIP four, which is the next piece, that's the piece that gets the water under TCB and into the ditch. That's in this year's CIP. We'll probably be putting together an RFQ on that later this fall. And there's a lot of things going on in that area. There's transportation, there's pedestrian, there's all sorts of travel utilities. That's not going to be an easy project. It's going to be pretty complicated. But we are going to look at it holistically. We want to try to figure out some transportation issues while we're there. We've got some other utility issues we got to solve while we're there, so that's a that's a big piece in this whole system. And then after four, I've got a a graph later on that talks about five and six and eight and nine and when those are programmed. The overall goal is to get to 14th and Anderson right here. This is really the key to the system. That's where the two watersheds meet, and that's where we get all of our overflow. So when you see Blument with two feet of water in it, it's coming from 14th and Anderson. There is a structure there that was built in the 1930s that's just undersized. And so our goal is to get to 14th and Anderson eventually, intercept that overflow water and get it out. Again, our number four CIP, this is the one that's goes underneath TCB. It's in this year's CIP. Now you can see here Sonic, you know, hood deep on a four-wheel-drive pickup. There was a top of somebody's car. This is over by Dairy Queen, so you can see we have quite a bit of flooding issues along here. I I'm sure, I don't need to explain it to you, I'm sure you all know that. Probably two feet of water down there right now, actually. So this project will help pick up that water north of Blument, carry it underneath TCB, and then out north through the pretty ditch, up through the the levy. Again, here's our future CIP projects, TCB and Carney, this one right here, Third Street downfall. Lower Carney, so that's that number eight, that's this guy right here. I'm going to take away canoeing opportunities for college kids. I know, I'm sorry, I feel bad about that. Casement Road, we do have that in 2030. We did a study a couple of years ago on casement, and there's about an $8 million delta. We have funding for the stormwater portion, but the road portion, to widen it to three lanes, we don't have a funding source. So if a funding source comes along, that's something we'd like to do, again, about 30% designed. Initial cost estimate was about $8 million to three-lane casement. 2029, we have the South Manhattan, South Pointz project, so that's this one up here. This carries stormwater down, discharges it by South Manhattan. And then 14th Street Interceptor, which is the one just north of that, and then the Upper Carney. So that's kind of our projects from now until 2032. Obviously, you know, those slide as funding becomes available, or it doesn't become available, those slide out and up. Lots of big projects, lots of big dollar amounts. So this is our graph for this year for what our anticipated revenues and expenses are. Again, red is our beginning fund balance, and just like water and wastewater, it's three months of your operating plus your CIP bills, your your bonding, what you're paying on bonding. Again, here's that big dip that we're having this year, actually, as we go into '26, '27. I will say, you know, Commissioner Amati, you probably remember five, six years ago, that actually was negative in '26, and we've turned that around so that it's not negative. Three, four years ago, we thought we would be bouncing checks in '26, so thank you to former commissioners and taking the initiative to turn that around. That was not easy to do. But this is as we go out in future years. You see, there's a little bit of a delta that grows. You know, we've anticipated 50 cent increases out until 2040. There is a little bit of delta that comes in there. Again, that graph moves up and down, you know, every year as costs come in higher or lower, same thing with revenue. We're very conservative on our revenue projections. We obviously hope that there's more folks in the city, and then that leads to more revenue. Our comparables with other cities, this is actually one of my favorite slides. It shows that we're about in the middle. Now, one thing I do want to preface this by saying is Wichita and Hutch, who are over here on the lower sides, I'm sorry, Wichita and Overland Park, who are on the lower sides here, they actually dedicate mills of property tax to their stormwater fund. So you see 581 for Walmart, you think they're getting a smoking deal, but two mills in Wichita goes to the stormwater fund. Overland Park, I think, is about a .96 mill. It's just under one mill. So it looks lower, but, you know, you're also peeling property tax off. Again, as you go through them, you know, one ERU, and then as you go up, about 50% of our businesses pay less than $50 a month. So you're talking about, there's about 2,200 businesses in our business class. 50% of them, over 1,000 of them, are paying less than $50 a month.
Brian?
Yes.
ERU?
Equivalent residential unit, that's your base unit. 75% of our businesses pay less than 100 a month, so about 3,000 or about 2,500. So you'd be about 2,000 of the 2,500 are paying less than $100 a month. Then you start to get into the real bigger, bigger ones, 17 ERUs, 53 ERUs, you start getting into bigger, bigger areas. The top 10% pay about $500 a month, so you'd be looking at about 25 businesses in the city pay more than $500 a month. So, you know, you're talking a pretty select few now. You're getting pretty big, Walmarts, Targets, Menards, Home Depots, you're starting to get to those sizes. And then to top 2% pay $1,000 a month, that'd be about four businesses, four, five businesses. Again, you're talking huge areas there. And then Walmart, top 1%, pay 1,500 a month. Any questions on this slide? I will say some of these have not updated their costs yet, so they're in the budget cycle, just like we are. I did put in current costs for this year, so trying to keep apples to apples. So again, our surcharge, the goal of the surcharge is to make the revenue that's created by it equal to the bond payment. And then when that bond payment is paid off, then you could take that surcharge off. Currently, to date, we saved about $2 million for down payments. And then we are anticipating a increase to 2.75 or a quarter, 25 cents, in 2026 to help generate revenue for that down payment.
How long will we have that surcharge?
Until the bond's paid off.
Okay, so 10 years?
We're looking at a 20-year bond.
Okay.
It depends on interest rates, and it depends on what we get back for our later credits. That's why, we're we're taking our best guess here, but there's a lot of accounting that has to go on yet.
And that's a monthly surcharge?
Yes, that's correct. Yep. So this is our Fee in lieu program. This is the downtown watershed only. This has been enacted for a couple of years now, and at the time, the commission wanted us to come back every year with a, just a recap of what we did the year before. We're up to six total projects. 151 Coffee was the most recent. There are some more eligibles as they're, we were talking with developers about developing in that watershed. To date, I think every single person that's had the opportunity to do it has. I can't think of a single developer that's put detention in in the downtown watershed since we started this. We're proposing a 0% increase for 2026 in this one. We currently set it about $3.08 a square foot. So for every additional square foot of impervious area you put on your lot, you pay us a one-time fee of $3.08. There's about $200,000 in this line item, and this is, has to be by ordinance dedicated to improvements downtown. So this is downtown watershed only.
And is that east and west downtown watershed?
That's correct, yes. Yep. Then one more item real quick. We've been talking about this Fee in lieu of Treatment. EPA and KDHE makes us treat our stormwater before it goes into the Kansas and Blue Rivers. We're looking at a program that, instead of making the developer, the homeowner, do that improvements for those treatments on their property, we could have them pay into a fee for us, and then we would go out in other areas, out in the county, out in rural areas, and we'd buy credits that we could use to clean water elsewhere. Obviously, this is a, this is a big program. We're obviously very excited about implementation because it's much easier to clean clean water out in the rural area than it is in the city. It's hard because there's just a lot of pavement, a lot of runoff, asphalt in the city is tough to do. Currently, we're looking at about 31 cents a square foot for new impervious. That'd be a one-time lump sum fee. And right now, we are talking with KDHE, and we hope to get some information back to you this fall on implementing this program. With that, I will stand for questions.
Brian, thanks for clarifying my questions earlier.
It was confusing, I apologize.
No, no, I think it was me. I mean, I think the biggest question I have, and this is probably the same for Randy and Kevin, is I I think I'm a little confused on why our increases are still, or why why we're recommending increases that long-term are still showing us falling below what the projected fund balances need to be. And so that's just a general, I I think, concern that I have and wanting to keep things level. So I'm, I don't know that I'm understanding the rationale behind.
Sure.
Behind that, and and if if you wouldn't mind speaking on that, I know that's kind of, I'm throwing it out to all of you.
Yeah, and that's actually, that's a great question, and that's something we talk about quite a bit in this fund. I guess I would go back to the statement, five years ago, we thought this fund would be negative now. We made small incremental changes, and now that fund is not negative because we've had the advantage of time. I know we budgeted out to 2040, but you know, a lot of things can happen between now and 2040. Our philosophy has always been small incremental change makes a big difference over time, and that's what we've been sticking to. You know, you can certainly raise rates more to to move that line up or down, and you can do projects quicker, sooner, faster. If you did want to raise that rate, we could move those projects up. But this is kind of what we've settled on until 2040. You know, that's kind of the direction we've been given in the past.
I guess theoretically, if if, is it possible to even complete projects?
Oh, yeah.
Sooner.
Yeah. Yeah, we spread them out based on this budget. Yeah, you could certainly get them, get them done quicker.
Andrew Von Luntel, 225 Four Winds Court, a kind of the same, I mean, I feel like downtown, the water problems are probably not going to get worse. Is there going to be a lot more development? Is there going to be a lot more runoff? I mean, the systems seem like they were built in the 30s or whatever, but, I mean, we've learned to deal with some of it. So I mean, I guess I'm curious, I wouldn't call, to me, I don't know, I'm not sure if this is like the biggest priority. It's something we want to get done. We don't want flooded streets, but I don't think the problem's going to get worse. I guess that's my question. Thanks.
I mean. We need to give Daniel and staff a little direction as to what we think about waste, water and wastewater rates and stormwater rates.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with everything that's been outlined.
I guess just to address Andrew's thoughts.
Sure.
The way our, Brian, will you just address that?
Yeah.
Our water works.
Yeah, so everything in the downtown east and west watershed obviously runs east, and the farther east you go, the more at risk you are for flooding. I would, I would be willing to guess that there's not a lot of development on Third and Fourth Street because they're worried about getting their business flooded. If you buy a. because they're worried about getting their business flooded. If you buy a property down there, you probably should buy flood insurance, and flooding obviously is a huge deterrent to development. Nobody wants to build where they're going to get flooded out and lose business. So the sooner we can get these projects done, the sooner we can address that flooding issue, I think you're going to see a lot of redevelopment in those areas.
But I do think we're seeing stronger and heavier storms, and I don't think there's any way we can make it, I want to say childproof.
No, yeah.
Waterproof.
There's always a bigger storm.
Yeah, if you're going to get four inches in 20 minutes, it's going to flood, you know.
Yeah. Not only private property, McCollin TCB, we've replaced that signal two or three times now in the last decade. That's about a $75,000 a pop replacement. We've replaced it two or three times because it got flooded. So there's, you know, public infrastructure there also that is certainly in risk. It's at risk of getting damaged. Thank you all.
Amber, were you going to add something?
Let me just borrow you again. Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. Of the listed future capital improvement projects, can Mr. Johnson help me understand which, or if any, address flooding on Yuma Street?
Yuma Street?
Yes.
Or?
Specifically, so I drove down Yuma today while all that rain was going on. It gets really bad once you get east of 11th.
Sure. So a couple of things. We've done two projects down there that have certainly helped the flooding. CIP 1 was done several years ago, about $6.7 million.
Okay.
Large storm sewer pipe running down Sixth Street, and then also Project 15 with downtown redevelopment, Third and Fourth Streets. Again, large diameter storm sewer pipe. Actually, still making payments on. About 2012, we did that.
Okay.
So both of those two. The project down South Manhattan also would help that flooding. So your flooding is actually coming all the way from the high school. That's where that water's coming from. So we have a number of projects set up to help intercept that before it gets this far.
Okay, so what I noticed was that closer to the high school, west.
Talk later about this.
Mayor McCullough, I would recommend that Amber Starling finish her three minutes worth of comments, and then if the commission wishes Mr. Johnson to respond to any questions that she had, we can do so after the meeting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you sometime. Okay?
Thank you. Gorgeous. Yeah, so I did drive down west towards the high school is not nearly as bad, and there are more drains than east after 11th Street. That would be the issue that I am most interested in. Okay, thank you.
Talked about. Seeing no other public comment, so. Jason, you wish to?
I'm next.
Oh, you're next. So what kind of direction do you all want to give Danielle and Jason?
Again, I think the rate increases proposed, I'm comfortable with. It is kind of how we've kind of done it in the past. We look at those out years. We know they're doing it kind of conservatively on the projections. We put those in, and as long as it keeps coming in, okay, we kind of stick with it before we, you know, take rates up dramatically or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. This, this isn't something that's going to go up naturally, so we kind of do have to take control over this and set those, so I'm okay with the increase.
I have just one more question of clarification about the differential that Jamie mentioned. Is that acceptable to you in part because you anticipate bringing in a balanced budget or bringing in a budget that may be 500,000 or a million more than you expected? And so that's being applied forward?
Yeah. So I mean, obviously, as city engineer, public works director, I would like to do those projects sooner rather than later because, you know, it's, it's a personal embarrassment when people are floating down my streets.
In kayaks.
But I also know that there's, you know, there's a, there's a pain point for people when it comes to paying fees, and so we're trying to balance that as much as we can with something that's on the horizon that we can see that's not out to 2050 with also not raising rates at an astronomical rate. So we're trying to balance that out. Would we like to do those projects faster? Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to. But, you know, that, that's going to require revenue.
And I certainly appreciate, we talked quite a bit last year about the reserve funds for the general fund, and, you know, I certainly agree, it wouldn't take very much to cause
Yeah.
an extraordinary amount of damage in the town.
Especially with flooding. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you wish to add anything for Danielle?
I'm fine with what is being proposed also.
I think then we're all on target. Jason? Mine's will be slow. It's raining again.
Saw we had another cell moving in, so.
I do think before, sorry, before Jason starts, just maybe just a reminder to us on how we're doing public comment. I think we all were letting that, we were addressing people, having to address staff as well and have it come this way, so just a request from all of us.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Wanted to provide you all with a little bit of a revenue picture as we head into the 2026 budget. We could talk a little bit about 2024 actuals and 2025 budget as we're operating in currently. We do provide some forecasts here to give you a sense of where revenues have been and where we are seeing them currently in anticipation for the next 18 months. This is just graphically trying to give you a picture of roughly the 146 to 151 million dollars in revenue that the city realizes in one way, shape, or form. These are the larger categories, and I certainly understand the other sources is very large. If we start breaking that down, I think you've heard us say this before, but we have over 80 revenue streams that come into the city. So the other category is, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's A to Z. But property tax, sales tax, our utilities that you just heard from, those are our main drivers, and that's why we spend a lot of time with you on those sources. But these other sources also contribute to that overall stream. This is a little bit more of a breakdown, showing you per category how those have moved between actuals, budget, and forecast. I'll draw attention to property tax just initially. 2024 actuals, you know, 34.7. We were in here last summer, early fall, talking about the need to increase that. You all agreed to do so. So we roughly, in the, in the general fund of that property tax, realized an additional $4 million in 2025. There was a couple more million dollars in 2025 also for RCPD. When you look at property tax revenues for the city of Manhattan, 60% go to, go to RCPD, 10% go to the library, 30% will come back into the city for operations. Those stay pretty true for all three of those numbers. The 26 forecasted, we do have the increase in there, anticipated for RCPD and the library, but we are flat for the city in that number at 42.6 million. Utility fees, you got to feel tonight for that 3%. The other sources stay relatively flat as far as our experiences and what we anticipate from our '25 budget to our '26 forecast. You will see a slight increase in sales tax. We've split this between the 1% and the .95, which is dedicated. Remember that .95, .5 EcoDevo, public infrastructure debt, .25 quality of life, park and rec type of facilities, and the .2 for street maintenance. That comprises your .95. Those are dedicated. They're part of ballot initiatives. They have specific improvements that they're helping fund. So we don't include the beginning fund balances or the transfers in the 140, 146, and the 151, but you can see we passed a budget last year of 229 million. Anticipate that going up to about 237 million for 2026. I'll dive a little bit deeper into property tax and sales tax now. You can go out on the Department of Revenues website, and you can look at any city and any county, and you can realize what they're bringing in on a monthly basis or an annual basis. I provided the website here. You do need to know the tax rate at which they're providing you a revenue stream. That can be somewhat complicated to figure out. They do have spreadsheets that have them in there, but this 1.95 rate that we just talked about, 1% is permanent, .95 has those dedicated 10-year runs, that's our percentage. So when you see a total for 2024, it's going to be more around the 25, 26 million figure. You got to back into that with the 1.9% rate. We're doing about 1.36 billion in sales in, at the, for the entire year in Manhattan for 2024. It's a 5% increase from what the total sales were in 2023. If you remember back to last summer, we knew we had four or five months of history, but we really weren't all that excited about forecasting that 5% increase. It was realized in 2024. That has helped us on a cash balance perspective. It has also helped us in realizing 15 inches of snow in January. These things help, and it gets back into that cash balance scenario and situation. We keep you updated on a monthly basis on our sales tax, but we also keep you updated on our cash balance. That is really the barometer we try to use, especially in the general fund and your utility funds, like you heard tonight, of that three-plus-month operational type of reserve. We are trending higher again in 2025. First five months, we are 4%, 4.6% higher than we were in the first five months of 2024. This is all good news. It gives cushion. There's another side of the budget called the expenditures, but the revenues are trending in a positive direction. I would say the same thing for property taxes. Last year, the valuation that was certified, just over 721 million. This is, that's the valuation that impacts both tax payments, the one due in December, and the next one due in April. So that mill was worth just over $721,000 last year. Once you have that valuation, that mill is 1/1,000 of that value, and that's really the value of your mill. So what we're anticipating for 2025, we received both from Riley County and Pot County, their valuations. We had about a 3.7% growth in Riley County, and we had about a 5.5% growth in Potawatomi County. So together, that made up about a 3.82% increase. So we grew by $27,540 per mill. So we're roughly that $748,742. Revenue neutral. This is a heads up. Three weeks from now, you have to take some action on revenue neutral. Based on the valuation we were provided, revenue neutral for the city of Manhattan would have a mill rate of 51.156. Last year, we were 53.109. That 51.156 represents what the mill levy would need to be in order to generate the same amount of revenue we did in property taxes last year. So you would be looking at a two-mill decrease in order to remain revenue neutral. Wanted to make sure we got that review in. We got three weeks. You'll see the recommended budget from city manager on July 8th. That'll have a lot more detail about revenues and expenditures, but more of an education tonight on that. Any questions on revenue neutral before we hop to other topics? And we mentioned the July 8th presentation on the budget, mentioned the revenue neutral rate. Just so you recall, we have two hearings in Kansas, one based on that revenue neutral rate, the other on the, on the budget you actually published late August. So we'll, we'll host the hearings on September 2nd, and since you did away with first and second readings of ordinances, our ordinance will be on September 16th is what's anticipated as of now. Any questions this evening for you, for staff on, on revenues?
Questions for Jason?
I would just like to follow up on the, the public hearings, and what format are you anticipating utilizing for those?
We'll, we'll do similar like we have in the past. We will open up the meeting as a hearing itself. You'll receive information from administration. You, as the commission, will be able to ask us questions. We would then open it up to the public to have a hearing on the budget. Their comments and their opinions could be expressed. We'll engage and have a conversation, and you all can give us direction on what questions you'd like us to answer, and that ultimately would complete the hearing once the citizens have, have commented. Is that what you're asking?
No, I meant, I'm sorry. I meant the public engagement forums.
She meant the, yeah.
Oh.
But you did a nice job explaining the public hearings, Jason. Good job.
It's been a topic in the past, so I knew Gary was here. What was your case? Okay, sorry.
Left, actually.
Yes.
You missed his nonverbal communication. That's great.
August 16th through the 22nd, we need to adjust this. So we're going to go back into the weekend, so that Saturday is August 16th, and I think that's really going to be our first one. And then we'll have one probably on either Wednesday of that week, but we're headed, right now, we're anticipating having these at the rec centers, either Anthony or Eisenhower. We'll basically have the resources in the room to where we can talk about anything within that $239 million budget. We'll have our folks here from the utilities, just like they have tonight, talk to you about different rates and different projects that they're working on, but we'll also get into the general fund. We'll have debt. We'll have property taxes. We'll be able to calculate your property tax for you. We'll hopefully get a little printer in there and be able to, here's your, here's your anticipated tax bill, given everything we'll know at that point in time. Obviously, the 12th is a work session where we're hoping to get feedback from you all. So when we do go to those forums, the 16th through the 22nd, we would be able to forecast where the mill rate is headed and their anticipated tax payments. That would first half be due in December, second half in April. We would have a lot of really good information for them. We also need to concentrate on the services we provide. There's a lot of debate on general fund type of services versus our utility services. We would have all our departments represented in there to answer questions. We're people-oriented. A big percentage of our budget is people, so I think having that presence in the room will help educate those who may choose to attend.
And Jason, what do you envision the, the commission's role in that?
We could notice it as a public meeting. You can all come, and you could help if you'd like. It's really up to you all. Really up to you.
Something to think about.
Yep.
Jason, I know we're talking about valuation and revenues, but it's my understanding, I just want to clarify, RCPD, what, what their budget has passed has, is beyond what our valuation increase was for this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, and you see the 40 million. Valuation growth in itself is 1.4 million. Their, their budget of a roughly a 6% increase, the city's portion of that is around 1.6 billion. So we have 1.4 million in total growth, and we have the city's portion of the RCPD budget at 1.6. We have an additional mill levy being requested from the library. And again, I, we don't have anything in there for the city by way of additional mill levy support. We'll get into that a lot more.
Yeah, I know. I don't want to jump into it too much. I just wanted to make sure we were on that same page.
That's the 2.6 million. Two million of that is library and RCPD. Our growth on our 18 mills roughly is a half million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And then will you point out?
I knew I shouldn't open this door, but, because we could, we could talk about this for some time. Sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
I just want to make sure when you do the presentation, you point out the savings for animal control, because that did
Yes.
jack up that RCPD budget.
In, in our general fund, we'll, we'll reflect those as well.
So the projected, that 42, from 40 to 42, is that just with growth, or is that with?
1.4 is
Right.
is growth.
That's, okay, so, so that's?
There's another one.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and again, we'll, we'll get into a lot more of that on July 8th.
All right.
Wanted to give you a picture of revenues. I, there haven't been too many years where we've come up here and felt optimistic about revenue. there haven't been too many years where we've come up here and felt optimistic about revenue, and this is one of those years. It's two straight years of four to five percent growth potential in sales tax. We have a long history of not showing a whole lot of growth in sales tax. I mean, back to probably twenty seventeen. So, I don't know how long it's going to be sustained.
Say, so we're not trending that forever?
Right, you're, you're not there, you know, I don't know, it'll take five years to be a trend, Susan, but it, it, it takes a while. But I do think it's, it's helped the city manager, it's provided a little cushion. If we didn't have that additional revenue in twenty-four, and we weren't seeing it in twenty-five, that seven hundred and twenty-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar snowstorm that it cost us would be front and center, competing with what you're seeing right now. But we've been able to absorb that, but I don't want to discount, the expenditure side has also been dialed in and held. Where we left you last September, we outperformed by way of expenses. We forecasted thirty-eight and a half million, we delivered thirty-six and a half. It has absolutely helped realize over an eleven million dollar cash balance, and last September, we told you we targeted nine and a half. So, those things, that revenue and holding the line, has allowed us to operate and reach a position where, again, July eighth, you'll see it, but it's, it's not as dire as it's been the last few years.
I can just say, go ahead.
Sorry. Are you able, how are the sales tax revenues reported to us? Are we able to distinguish what is spent in retail, what is spent in restaurants and entertainment, what is spent on automobile purchases?
Yeah, we send out a monthly sales tax report.
Don't you see that?
Yeah.
It, it, it is.
Just went right through my brain.
It, it's, it's a four-page breakdown of all the sales tax. The state does a really good job giving us that form. We take it to another level with more detailed breakdown. It is in that report. They are on our website. We can definitely get links out if folks need to see or be reminded where they're at, but they are on the findings page. If you get there, you can see monthly reports, it'll be part of that.
Thanks.
You bet.
Oh, I was just going to say, we appreciate the, how diligent all the city staff has been in like keeping those expense. I know we're talking about revenues tonight, but that, that's a huge part of it, so we appreciate that.
Anything else? Thank you.
No more questions? Any public comment? Seeing?
I wouldn't want to disappoint. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Oles, I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. First off, I want to express what a sharp staff the city has in terms of the budget and the numbers. To try to understand what they do, you probably ought to have some letters behind your name to comprehend all the intricacies of what they do, and, and the citizens don't express that enough to you all, but it's, it's amazing, as I've tried to, tried to study the budgets, but a couple of things I want to throw out at you. I'm going to make the assumption that the budget workshops are going to be a little more, less restrictive to three minutes. Hopefully, there'll be more back and forth, because that's the time that I'll probably ask more, more questions, but some of the things I want to point out, and this is, this may not be a true statement, okay? But I'm going to use another city as an example. A city on the other side of the river, last year, budgeted, underbudgeded their sales tax revenue by six million dollars. That's a great surplus to have, and they're going to spend it on fixing streets and things like that. However, you think about the budget process, if you underbudget sales tax to that degree, and Manhattan does not do that, but if you did, you're going to overcharge property taxes, because you have to. That's, the numbers are the numbers, the expenses are expenses, particularly the fixed expenses. So, from what I can tell, Manhattan and everybody does a really good job of trying to get as close as they can. They're reluctant to add that five percent, you know, which is understandable, but don't get too far away from it, because otherwise, more property taxes. And I think, if you remember last year, and I don't think this is statutory, I think it's just a practice, but I would ask you to consider either a resolution or a directive or whatever it's called, that the two percent delinquency ratio, rate that's calculated by the state or the county for the school district, city, and county, not be included in the projection of property taxes or the calculation of property taxes. It's my understanding that two percent is included, and therefore, eventually, when that delinquent taxes are collected, because they're certainly collected for the most part, at least in this town, you still get the revenue. But where did the difference get made up? It get not, got made up in point oh oh one mill, you know what I mean? It's, granted, it's not much, but the delinquency, I don't think, as a matter of principle, should be calculated in that. But that, I'm just one opinion, of course. I, I want to express once again, you, you've got a really tough job this year, and I know you're going to do what you believe to be the best, and we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Danielle, do you need anything else from us?
So, we kind of look through what you all can expect for the next couple of meetings. Next week, we will not have a commission meeting, so you all have the night off on Tuesday, and then we will jump back in at a work session on July eighth and dive into the budget.
Budget.
So, very much looking forward to that. And you do have some upcoming meetings. Thursday on June twenty-sixth at three P M., we have our R H I D task force with the U S D three eighty-three, City of Manhattan and Riley County. That will be at the Lincoln Education Center again. July Policy Breakfast will be Thursday, July seventeenth at seven fifteen. That is at the Doubletree with Stacy Colemeyer, who is the president of the chamber and County Commissioner Greg McKinley speaking. If you are interested in that, please RSVP by July tenth. And then, we have a joint city-county-county meeting scheduled for Thursday, July seventeenth at four P M. At this time, we do not have any items. And then, the intergovernmental luncheon will be on Monday, July twenty-eighth at noon. RSVP to that by July twenty-second. You guys have some time. I can't believe we're talking about July already. There is an invitation for the Kansas Economic Outlook Conference, so that is on Thursday, October second. Early bird registration ends on September second, if you're interested in attending that, so that is in Wichita. The last thing that we have on our agenda, I sent an email just letting you all know that we have received eight statements of qualifications from firms who were interested in putting together our fire training facility master plan. Commissioner Mitten has volunteered to serve on that selection committee, so. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Danielle, for the benefit of anyone who may be watching or listening, can you please repeat the announcement you made yesterday about the use of fireworks in Manhattan?
Yeah, of course, so, City of Manhattan, fireworks are allowed from July first through July fourth, from eight A M. to midnight, so please celebrate responsibly.
Thank you.
We will hope so. Is there a motion from the commission to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you please?
All in favor.
You have what?
You can either call the roll or do a.
No, you, you just, you just say that I made, that Susan made the motion, and Peter seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye, okay, all opposed? There we go.
Okay.